Welcome to our April 23rd council meeting. Calling the meeting to order, and we will begin with council member information and follow-up requests. Do any council members have any updates? Councilwoman Pastore.
I always have updates. Tomorrow, from 9:00 to 11:00, we will be celebrating the 50th Street Station. Join us if you can. This is the First Light Rail Project funded by T-2050. And then tomorrow evening, we will have a District 4 Community Chat from 5:30 to 6:30 at the Puerto Rican Latin &amp; Bar Grill, 2714 West Thomas Road. Then Saturday, we have the World Bazaar from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on 19th Avenue in Camelback. This is presented by IRC, Fuerza Local, and the City of Phoenix with support from Mountain Park Health Center and Valley Metro. This is where we get to celebrate all the different activities around the world. And then Saturday night is the Chicano's Borlakalsa 50th Year of Empowerment Dinner and Awards. That starts at 6:00 p.m. and will go on until late in the evening because post-dinner Sheila E. will be playing for us. And this will be the inaugural of the Ed and Verma Pastor Community Leadership Honoree, and it's the Los Angeles Major League Baseball Owners' Moreno Family Foundation, Artie and Carrie Moreno, who will be honored under my parents' name. And one last item, he'll probably get a little embarrassed, but I want to congratulate Burgett for his retirement. This week is his last week, Friday? Yes? Okay. With a big smile, or is that like, "I don't want to leave you guys"? Well, yes. Well, thank you for all your service, Burgett. Really enjoyed working with you. So, thank you.
I'm sorry, Govada. Thank you. This week, we have our community office hours at the Salvo Doreño Restaurant #2 located at 733 West Thomas Road from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. That's tomorrow, community office hours, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then this Saturday, we have a community celebration. It's like a sunrise walk at Little Canyon Park. We're meeting there this Saturday with the Cordova Neighborhood Association from 7:30 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. And if you have any questions, please give our office a call. Thank you.
Any additional council member updates? Councilman Noakowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, my family and I had the opportunity to go out to the Easter egg hunt at in Candle Park that's been going on for the last 18 years. What a great event, and I really want to thank the individuals that run Enchanted Island that continue to do this community event, Teresa and Craig Lyon, for all their years of caring and giving back to the community. Thank you. Also, tomorrow, we're going to have an FAA Flight Path Step 2 Workshop. It's at Caesar Chavez High School. It's from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And this event is to discuss the flight path change and also to get community input. So if you're out there and you're concerned out in the Leveedian area about the flight path, come on down to Caesar Chavez School and High School, and we'll give our concerns to the FAA. Also, we have two Dia de los Niños events going on this weekend. We have one at Caesar Chavez Park, which is this Saturday. It's a free event. Everybody's welcome to come out. It starts at 9:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. It's fun for the whole family. And also, another event at the Phoenix Zoo. So you pay your entrance to the Phoenix Zoo, and there's all kinds of activities and fun stuff for Dia de los Niños, Day of the Children. So come on out and enjoy either Saturday at Caesar Chavez Park, or Sunday, if you're out there by the zoo, come on down and enjoy Dia de los Niños with us out there. Also, we have a big Cinco de Mile event in South Phoenix. It's going to be right there at the South Plaza Shopping Center. That's right off of Central and Southern Avenue. We're going to have all kinds of things going on out there. There's going to be a car show, a community fair. So we welcome everyone to come out. It's free. It's open to the -- it's a family event, and it's open to the community. So come on down. And lastly, Saturday, May 18th. That's a Saturday Star Spangled Banner Celebration. This is a celebration to keep in memory all the fallen police officers and firefighters over the last years that have given this ultimate sacrifice. And it's a way for us as a community to say thank you and to celebrate their legacy and keep them in mind of what they've done for this great city of ours and the sacrifice that their families are going through, losing a loved one. So that's really it, Mayor, so hopefully you see everybody out there.
Busy time. Any additional council member updates? All right. We do not have a consent agenda today. For our city manager, do you have any budget updates for us?
Mayor, thank you, members of the council. Just a moment to say thank you for hosting 20 budget hearings. They concluded on April the 18th. In talking to my city management colleagues around the Maricopa County region, no one else does a process like this that has this many opportunities for public engagement. And so I want to thank you for the commitment that you all put into that and to thank our city staff. We had hundreds of attendees and comments. We are processing through those, and of course, while we can't respond to every comment in the budget, we will do our best to address as many as we can. And so the proposed budget will come to this body on May the 7th, and that will start the process for adoption, which will begin on May 22nd. So again, thank you to all for hosting those hearings.
Wonderful. Thank you. We will now move to Agenda Item Number 1 on pedestrian safety. It's already been a big week for safety in Arizona with the governor signing legislation so that people should not be texting and driving. It's something we hear throughout the community that we want to make sure all of our drivers and all of our pedestrians get home safely, and so I'll introduce our deputy city manager, Mario, to introduce the panel.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor, and members of the city council. We're here today to discuss pedestrian safety, the status of what's been a large, growing problem both in Phoenix and across the country, especially in recent years. We'll be discussing what we've been doing to reverse the trend in Phoenix and then have a discussion on some possible next steps to intensify our efforts to address the fatalities and serious injuries on our streets. So presenting with me today, to my right is Mylin Pankiewicz, who is our recently appointed Pedestrian Safety Coordinator. And then to her right is Keeney Knutson, our Street Transportation Director. Also with us is Suresh Ragavendra from AE Comm. And I'll talk to you in just a little bit about why we have Suresh up here as well. And then Assistant Chief Jim Burgett from the Police Department, who Councilwoman Pastore just recognized as being a week away from retiring. So we really appreciate having him up here today. And so Suresh is here from AE Comm. He's joining us today because, as we've talked about and examined, more ways to be effective at dealing with the pedestrian safety issue. We did have some inquiries from the mayor and some members of our council about an internationally recognized program called Traffic Safety Program called Vision Zero. And so AE Comm has worked with other communities to implement Vision Zero in those cities, and we've talked and asked Suresh to be here today to talk to you more about that, to explain what it is and how it can be effective. So before we get into that, I'm going to cover a little bit about what we're seeing as the pedestrian safety issue. The bulk of our presentation is really to talk about what's happening with pedestrian safety and some of the ways we've been addressing that and to open up a discussion for the council. So as I mentioned, pedestrian safety is a national problem. It's a growing problem across the country. Factors that many experts attribute the recent rise to include more, just more vehicle miles traveled as population grows and the economy improves, more people own cars, and of course, the distracted drivers due to increased smartphone usage and other technology that can be distractions in vehicles. And so, as the mayor mentioned, it's new legislation. We're hopeful we'll assist with that. So what we've seen across the country, as you see on this chart, over the last 10 years, in the United States, pedestrian fatalities have risen 35%. In Arizona, that number jumps to 81%. When you look at the City of Phoenix, it's a much larger increase of 125% over the last 10 years. In last year's budget, the council approved a new pedestrian safety coordinator position. And as I mentioned, Mylin Pankiewicz is here. She is our Pedestrian Safety Coordinator and oversees the Office of Pedestrian Safety, coordinating the work between police and street transportation departments with the goal of eliminating serious injuries and fatalities of pedestrians and just working to make sure that our networks of transportation are safe for all users of the streets. There was also, a year ago, began meeting an internal staff pedestrian task force with the same goal, really addressing those pedestrian fatalities, getting right at the problem. And really, the strategy has included what we call the four Es of traffic safety. We begin with the evaluation of data and taking a hard look at the data that we have available to us, data collected from the incidents on scene by police officers, data about the location and what's happening in the surroundings. We take a look at how that data can help us guide decisions on engineering and the design of the roadway. It also helps the police department with enforcement and knowing where to focus the enforcement efforts as well as education. Education being the last E in helping to improve public awareness about the problem. So I'm going to talk a little bit more about the evaluation piece. We're going to cover those four Es and the work that we've been doing. When we look at evaluation, we talk about the data collection. We talk about the key factors, and we'll show you some of the key factors that we've found that have been involved in the pedestrian fatalities and serious injuries, as well as our mapping analysis and what that's shown us and how that can help us make decisions moving forward. So the police department and the streets department have worked collaboratively to improve data collection efforts recently. The police officers on the scene at the time of the incident, that information that they collect is critical. And so they have, they've actually, through the discussions with the task force, have found some ways to improve the forms that they use and the data that they collect, things like what type of street did the incident happen on? Was there a crossing nearby and was it used? What were the lighting conditions if the incident happened at night? Was there transit stopped nearby and was that associated with the incident? Number of lanes in the street, and then what was the lane configuration? So those are some additional data points that were added to what the police department -- they now collect that information in addition to all the other information that they had been collecting. When we look back at last year's data, so I just want to point out that this is preliminary. When we look at 2018, the data is preliminary. It's really what the officers collected on the scene is what we have for 2018. We'll also get into talking about some of the historical data that has been finalized. And so, but I wanted to point out that this is preliminary. But for 2018, we saw that 78% of the pedestrian fatalities and serious injuries were on an arterial road. So our largest streets, sometimes these are as big as six, seven lanes across, 85 feet wide, and so quite a lot of road to cover when crossing the street. 77% were during nighttime hours, and then 57% were outside of a crosswalk. About 38%, or a little more than a third, were in areas where we only have single-sided lighting on the street. So older city standards meant that street lighting was only installed on one side of an arterial street, for example. Newer standards have it on both sides, but in older areas, we still see some of these areas where there's only lighting on one side. 35% were within 500 feet of an existing crossing. 32% were hit-and-run incidents, and then 19% had possible drug and alcohol involvement. So I want to put a really big caveat on that 19% number because once this data is finalized, that number will grow substantially. This, again, this is the data collected on the scene, but once the data includes toxicology reports and reports from medical examiners, it will show a lot more information. So for pedestrians, when we look back at the last five years of data, the pedestrians that were killed in these types of incidents, half of those were shown to have been impaired with drug or alcohol. And so that's something I want to make sure that's pointed out here. When we have the finalized data, it includes that information that's not shown on the The other aspect that we were able to look at was the geographic piece of this. And so we've got some mapping tools that allow us to plot where the bulk of the incidents are happening. And you can see on this chart, which is what we call our heat map, you can see where the majority of the incidents are happening. As you get closer to the center of the city, you see the intensity increase. So the red and bright orange areas are those that represent the areas where the most fatalities and serious injuries are happening. So we've used this map to help guide decisions about engineering, police's traffic enforcement, and our education efforts. And so this is a critical piece of our efforts to continue working on addressing the issue. So next, we're going to have Keeney Knutson talk about the engineering and how we've been able to make some improvements with the design of our roadway and infrastructure.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. I'm here to talk a little bit about the engineering, one of the other Es here that we're responsible for. What I'd focus on, on the engineering side, is we have a lot of tools in our toolbox to try to address pedestrian safety issues in areas where we have concerns or incidents of fatalities or serious injuries when it comes to pedestrians. But as Mario noted, the evaluation component that we have to do first really helps guide us which tool in the toolbox we will use. And so here's some of the ones that we're going to be talking about here when it comes to the engineering side that have been successful tools for us or ones that we can employ. The first one is from a street lighting perspective, and as Mario noted in some of the data that we have collected, street lighting and the existence of street lighting can contribute to visibility, how visible is somebody crossing the street when they are crossing the street if a vehicle is coming up upon that pedestrian. So some of the things that we've been doing here as citywide, we've been underway in the last two years on an LED replacement project, and that's not just about saving energy, which it will, but it'll also provide an LED light, which is a clear, brighter fixture that can provide a little bit better visibility than our standard HPS-type fixtures that we've used in the past. And so we're hopeful that will help contribute to a safer environment in the streets. I would also mention that we have been taking advantage of state and federal and regional grants that we've had available to look at opportunities where, as Mario noted, that if we have areas where we have high pedestrian traffic, that we can install street lighting in those areas to fill gaps that may exist or to provide better visibility in those locations to help better warn drivers or for drivers to be able to be understanding that there are pedestrian activity coming up. I want to also point out our high-visibility crosswalks. Our standard crosswalks are parallel lines. You typically see those at most of our intersections, but we do have a tool in our toolbox that are high-visibility. It's called a ladder-style crosswalk that allows for us to put those into locations where we have a high pedestrian activity. And what it does is it provides a more visual, it's reflective paint, so it provides a better visual clue to drivers that there is something coming up the road that they need to be wary of, especially if there's high pedestrian incidents in there. And so, yeah, we'll look at those opportunities even when we're looking at new crosswalks or even crosswalks that are existing that are standard type, that we can upgrade them to a high-visibility or ladder-style crosswalk in locations. Then looking at another tool is speed evaluation. And one thing we can do on the speed evaluation is looking at that heat map, that hotspot map that Mario referenced, that we've been using to look where we have these incidents of pedestrian fatalities and injuries, and look using that to see if there's opportunities to evaluate speeds in corridors where we have pedestrian fatalities or injuries, to see if speed is a factor in contributing to those incidents. I would tell you that there's studies out there that show that obviously the faster a vehicle strikes a pedestrian, the less chance of that pedestrian surviving that collision. And so that's something we want to make sure we have the ability to evaluate in corridors, in specific corridors where we have those areas and incidents. Lane widths, this is something I know the council's been very focused in on our pavement maintenance program and accelerate our pavement maintenance. Well, when we do pavement maintenance projects, that gives us an opportunity to be able to look at how we re-strike back the roadway. And what we've found is when we, and this is something we've seen here locally, but also nationally, if we are able to reduce the lane widths from what we have standard as a 12-foot to an 11-foot width or a 10-foot width, that provides drivers with, I would say, a feeling that they need to slow down in those locations. So you do see a speed reduction when you reduce the width of the lanes, when you're trying to create a safer environment for roadway traffic and for pedestrians and users of the right-of-way. And so we look at those to be able to operate, in most cases, to be able to make sure we have a safe and drivable width.
Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt, but that does bring up a question. When you're talking about the lane width, you're actually looking at it in an effort to bring it to a current speed limit? Because isn't part of our problem, people are just speeding?
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, that's correct. When we're looking at those, we're looking at what is the activity? Because before, we would look at a lane width reduction or lane width reduction, we're looking at what the speed traffic is out there. So we're looking at the data. And yes, if there's, what we see on a roadway is that people are going 10, 15, 20 miles an hour over the speed limit, that would be a location where we'd want to try to do something from a speed perspective, especially if we have incidents of pedestrian fatalities or injuries in that location and that area.
Thank you.
The next one that we've had a very successful recent program to be able to look at is what we call a high-intensity activated crosswalk. And these are pedestrian-oriented signals, and we've been installing these signals around Phoenix since 2013. So it's been a relatively recent addition to our toolbox, but I will tell you, that's something that we have been, from a research perspective, that we've seen when these kinds of signals are going in at pedestrian locations, we see a reduction of collisions or the opportunity for collisions by 56%. And we have been very much engaged, especially more recently, on making sure we're funding substantial number of HOCS because there are a lot of requests out there for HOCS signals, especially we have those high pedestrian activity locations. And so we've been working on installing those around the city. The next slide I want to show here is just a list of our existing HOCS locations. And you can see, we've been very much dedicated over the last five, six years to installing these in locations around the city, especially when you overlay the heat map or hotspot analysis of where we have pedestrian fatalities and injuries. And so we have 45 HOCS already in the system, and in the plans in the next three years, we have plans for 46 additional HOCS. And I will tell you that 21 of those HOCS will be installed before the end of this calendar year. So it's something we're really dedicated, and as you can see, we're trying to use tools and data that we have, like this heat map, to make sure we're putting them in the correct location. And I would mention that we have been successful as also in those federal and regional grants to be able to look for opportunities, to be able to leverage our local monies with other funding sources to be able to install these HOCS signals. And we have a good number of those 46 HOCS that we have planned are being funded with outside forces, outside resources. But I also would say that we're also looking for opportunities to fund additional ones with those outside resources. This is a location that we were able to do just recently at 35th Avenue, Monterosa. We had some fatality in that location recently, and we were able to put a HOCS signal in there. And what happens with the HOCS signals, just for those who may not have experience with them, this signal does say dark without any lights on until a pedestrian comes upon that signal and wants to use it. They push the button, it activates the signal, those lights come on, stopping traffic and allowing pedestrians to safely cross at that location. And so when used properly, these have, as I mentioned before, have the opportunity to significantly reduce the chance of collisions with pedestrians. And we use these actually when we have a high incidence of pedestrian crossings or pedestrian injuries or fatalities at those locations. I will note that one of the concerns that we have is, and it gets into some of the other Es, is enforcement and education. When we're taking this photo of this HOCS location, you can see that we have somebody using a crossing the street at this location, not using the HOCS. And this is one of those things where it has an opportunity for us to use education and enforcement to try to guide this activity to using those infrastructures that we have in place. But I'll tell you, HOCS doesn't get us all the way there. And one location, we're looking at different tools here, is our full traffic signals. This one I know from Councilman Noakowski and Councilwoman Mendoza know, this is a location at 33 Ninth and Southern where we had two fatalities at this location in a span of a number of weeks, four to six weeks, back in the late 2018. We originally, as staff, went out and worked with the community after these fatalities, and we were talking about using a HOCS signal, the ones I just talked about in that location. But in working with the community and working with the council offices, we looked at what the right tool and need here is for a full traffic signal. Because we had not only a pedestrian issue at this location, but we also had a vehicle issue that was potentially contributing to the safety issues that were existing at this intersection. So this signal will be installed later this summer, and it's something that shows that, you know, from a staff perspective, we have thoughts about what tool we might use, but I think when we use community feedback and working with our council offices, we can find the right tool if it's not the right one we're originally thinking. And that's another, additional strategies that we have available to us. One is, as Mario noted earlier, this is a national problem. This is not just a Phoenix problem. So we want to make sure as we're addressing the concerns of pedestrian safety, we're not just doing it on our own. We want to look at what other cities are doing to successfully or to trying to address this issue of pedestrian safety. And we want to take advantage of those best practices that might be available out there. But we understand that Phoenix is unique. We need to make sure that those solutions that may be available out there, they can be custom-tailored to the needs of Phoenix because we are a different location, and we need to make sure that our solutions are tied directly to the types of uses and city that we are. The other thing is that we are a big city in this valley, but we're not alone. We're surrounded by other neighboring cities. We have freeways running through our city along with that have signals as well. We also have county islands intermits as well. And so we want to make sure we're working with other cities and agencies in our solution to pedestrian safety problems because they don't end at our municipal boundaries. We want to make sure the projects we're doing and the efforts we're doing are well-coordinated with our regional partners. I would be remiss also to mention that another great partner of ours is the Governor's Office of Highway Safety. We work with them on grants, and I know Chief Burgett's going to talk a little bit more about that later, about some of the things we've done, but they've been a great partner in helping us to address and fund some of these measures to try to address pedestrian safety issues. Oh, turn it over to Chief Burgett now.
Greetings, Mayor and Council. My name is Jim Burgett. I'm an Assistant Chief with the Phoenix Police, and that was very kind of you to wish me well in my retirement. So Mylin and I are going to talk about the educational and enforcement section of the presentation. We're going to talk about the enforcement efforts, the Heads Up Educational Campaign, the awareness events, and signage. So the Police Department has an outstanding relationship with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety Director Alberto Gutierrez, and Alberto has a main priority of car pedestrian fatality and the reduction of those. So he provided the Police Department a $50,000 grant so we can do enforcement and educational efforts through various parts of the city. And those spots were located based on our hotspots in the evaluation that we did as part of the task force. This was an effort not only to address violators of traffic laws, but to educate and engage both drivers and pedestrians about the shared responsibilities of being on the roadway. So in this two-month intensive effort across these locations, we had 197 officers participate. We had 1,086 total drivers and pedestrians contacted. We had 157 pedestrian educational contacts. We had four pedestrians cited, and we had 863 speeding citations issued. So with the next slide I'm going to show you is an example of the flyers that we distributed. And those flyers hit on our main talking points, how we want everybody to be aware of the increasing of fatality and collisions across the city, and to remind them that shortcuts can be dangerous, and to remind drivers and pedestrians to remove distractions, to utilize crosswalks, and of course, watch your speed. And I'm also happy to announce that in the Police Department, we have an ASU professor embedded within the Police Department, and they, ASU and some of his partners are working with our Vehicle Homicide Unit. And we're going to take a look at car pedestrians from a different angle with the assistance of Dr. Scotts in the audience today. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Mylin.
Thank you, Chief, and good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So following up on those education efforts, in 2018, the Street Transportation Department launched an educational campaign entitled Heads Up. The campaign has three main messages with Drive Smart, Bike Smart, and Walk Smart. We were able to display these messages in a variety of mediums throughout the city, including our the city, including our City Sanitation trucks, our own City of Phoenix website, the City Services billing, our Neighborhood Services Department newsletter, as well as our speed limit signs throughout the city. The Police Department also partnered with the Arizona Diamondbacks, and we were able to create a public service announcement using Baxter. And in regards to education, we also held four awareness events at Lyrel stations. These were to educate pedestrians on the safety measures that they need to take in order to cross the street appropriately. We had media coverage on these four awareness events. And in addition to these events, Councilwoman Williams and Councilman Nokowski participated in a public service announcement for the Heads Up campaign. And here it is.
I'm Phil the Williams.
And I'm Michael Nokowski.
No matter how you travel on Phoenix roadways, safety should always come first.
Roadway safety is a shared responsibility.
Heads up pedestrians, here are some key safety tips to follow.
Stay alert and don't walk distracted. Always be seen. Wear bright reflective clothing when it starts.
Always cross the street at designated crosswalks or intersections. Don't cross mid-block. Safety is everyone's responsibility. For more safety tips, visit phoenix.gov/headsup.
And I wanted to thank our Council District Office, 1 and 7, for helping us spread the message of safety on our roads. Also as part of education, with our data analysis, we identified a lot of the intersections. In fact, the top 10 intersections where we find that pedestrians were crossing within 500 feet of a signalized crossing. And we added a really bright Heads Up campaign signage to these locations, in both English and Spanish, to encourage pedestrians to use a crosswalk. As part of our data analysis, we also looked at other problematic areas from our VHU reports on pedestrian fatalities and serious injuries. Were due to surrounded land uses, we see that a lot of people tend to cross mid-block. And in these locations, we installed signs to guide pedestrians to use the existing crosswalks and to discourage them from crossing mid-block.
And Councilwoman Mendoza has a question.
In your education plan, have we thought about partnering with schools and doing some kind of education with the kids in crossing the road?
We do have a dedicated staff person that partners with schools. Kenny can talk a little bit more about that.
Yeah, can you please? Thank you.
Mayor, Councilwoman Mendoza, exactly what Mylan noted. We have a work, an employee in our Street Transportation Department who works specifically with the schools on both bike and pedestrian safety, providing them information, so they have it early at a young age to know how to work, operate safely in our street environment, whether they're biking or walking. And so, it's something we get outside funding as well, from the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, to be able to do some of those projects out there as well.
Thank you, Kenny.
Mayor, may I follow up?
Yes.
I remember at the beginning of the school year, we actually have a walk day to school where I was invited to go at least three to four different schools, where our coordinator for safety streets is actually there, and we actually give out flyers and handouts to the parents and the students themselves. That program still exists, right?
That's correct. Councilwoman Nokowski, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Don Cross, because he does a great work with a lot of our school districts out there in our schools, on doing that with the safer routes to schools. We do work on that as well. But thank you for being part of that as well.
Thank you.
Yes. And we also have a lot of cards today, so I was hopeful we'd do cards, and then council member questions after this final question, if that works. Thank you. Nope, Councilwoman Waring, please.
So, I can't remember, this is a message, well, for Kenny or Mario probably. So, I might have it reversed. We have 46 HOCS, and we're going to add 45? Or is that reversed? So we're adding 46 HOCS. How much is a, during that same period, I forget the period of time that you're going to be doing that, how many regular stoplights are we going to be putting in in that same period of time?
Mayor, Council, or Vice Mayor Waring, our number of traffic signals that we have available right now, we usually putting about three to four new traffic signals a year. But the traffic signals, a full traffic signal can run anywhere from 250,000 to 350,000, depending on the location. Whereas a HOCS signal is about $60,000 to $70,000 when we install one of those. And we're, as I said, we've been much more focused recently, just Doug, because we've been successful in being able to get some additional outside funding and grants in addition with our local monies to be able to advance our HOCS program.
Just at least in my area, we get requests for stoplights fairly frequently. We've fulfilled a few of them, but with only three or four, and that's the entire city, not my district. So of a city of 1.6 million people, you're only putting in three or four lights a year. I know the lights are more expensive, about, you know, roughly four times as much, three times as much, something. But you could still put in a lot more lights, which I would assume are overall a more effective traffic tool, at least to my mind. When I look at the statistics that Mario illustrated, I think I heard it right, in the last five years, you know, 50% half of the pedestrians who were killed were on drugs or alcohol. 57, so that would bump that up, if it holds true in 2018. It's down at the bottom now, I guess, seventh. It would jump up to the fourth biggest contributor, I think that's the way you phrase it, to these tragedies. You'd still have, not in crosswalk at 57%, and crossing, of those 57%, more than half, I think I'm reading this right, were within 500 feet of a crosswalk, but chose not to walk the extra feet, and they got hit. Some of it's undoubtedly due to speeding and so forth. I just, the utility of the HOCS, when I look at this list, and I look at the major contributors, further, most of these crossings, more than two-thirds, were on arterial roads that are about 30 yards across. I mean, that's a, that's a long walk, when you've got traffic. Those major arterials, I'm guessing the speed limits along there are going to be like 45 miles an hour, something like that. And you're going to have people driving 60 or 70, I see it every day. You know, it just seems like maybe the lights would have more of an overall impact, if you want to reduce the traffic flow, given what I just laid out. Because, you know, at least in a lot of these places, the crosswalks and so forth are available, people just aren't using those. Is that a fair analysis, when I look at the contributing factors of this?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Waring, I think that your analysis, you know, there's some truth to that, that it's not just an engineering solution we're talking about here, because these HOCS, whether you're doing a traffic signal or a HOCS, they're engineering solutions. But as Mario noted, we've got four E's that we're trying to deal with, and trying to work through this issue. And education and enforcement are part of that as well. I mean, we've got to make sure that when we evaluate these locations, is it the right engineering solution to be able to put a HOCS, or is it a signal at these locations? And some of these happen in areas where we don't have, we have a long stretches of roadway without signals. And so, there would be sometimes longer than 500 feet. But that's the reason why we do a lot of this analysis and evaluation, and the work of the task force has been doing for more than a year now, to try to look at these locations, to figure out what the cause of particular incidents are, and what can we do to respond to them.
Mayor, can I do a follow-up on the same subject? And I'm sorry, then I'll stop, I know you've got cards. So there's a HOCS at Kirland, I forget exactly what the cross street was, on Scottsdale Road, connecting Scottsdale to Phoenix, basically. It was put in before my time on the council. At Tatum and Bell, there's a new subdivision, and the Streets Department did not want a new stoplight to be put in for this new subdivision, because you had, I think it's five lights between 44th Street and 52nd Street. And you thought another light would be too much. I didn't disagree the way the traffic flowed, because then you're just moving boom, 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 light to light. But you put in the HOCS on Scottsdale Road, where it's just boom, 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 light, light, light. And I drive it, I know the HOCS is there, so I have to remind myself, hey, this could change at any time, because it does kind of sneak up on you. I would just, if you're going to go the HOCS route, I get what you're saying about the more wide-open spaces. I would still say, if it's that big of a problem, a traffic light might be the way to go. I would refer you to one that you're putting in a light next year, Robert E. Lee and Tatum. Again, it's a big street, people cross there, there was an accident there recently, and you're already going to put in a light there next fiscal year anyway. But I just, I just, I look at that Scottsdale Road setup, and I just think people might not totally process there's a HOCS until it's too late, the way it's laid out. So, you know, again, I would just look at the few number of stoplights that we're putting in compared to the, it's going to be a lot more HOCS. Please make sure you're evaluating bang for the buck, given the analysis of the data that you have in front of you. Thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor.
May I ask some questions then?
Yes.
Thank you, staff, for the presentation.
Which is not over yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's not over?
Not over yet.
Oh, I thought it was. I'll wait, I'll wait till the end. Sorry about that.
Thank you. I wanted to talk a little bit about next steps, actually, because we do recognize that a great part of enhancing Phoenix's safety and attractiveness has to do with how well we design all of our mobility systems, not just for vehicles, but for all multimodal transportation users who rely on walking to get to their destinations. We understand that we have a large proportion of drivers, but we also know that we have young people, we have elderly people, we have people with disabilities, we have residents that cannot longer drive, residents that cannot yet drive, some that don't want to drive, and also some that cannot afford a vehicle. And still, we all need to move about our city and to get to our destinations. And at the end of the day, we all deserve to make it back home safely, regardless of the transportation mode we rely on. So, we will continue to use data-driven analysis to look at road safety and its elements, but we will also be analyzing the variety of needs our residents have to provide safety solutions that are tailored specifically to Phoenix. We have a beautiful city of over 500 square miles, and arterials that move tens of thousands of vehicles every single day. And we fully understand that some solutions used in other cities are just not applicable to our own needs. But Mayor and Council have asked staff to investigate options to address pedestrian fatalities, and we find that our intent and our goals and our current activities are very much in line with Vision Zero frameworks that have been adopted nationwide to eliminate traffic fatalities. So I wanted to talk a little bit about Vision Zero. It is an ethical traffic safety approach that sets a goal of zero traffic fatalities or severe injuries, under the main belief that all people have the right to move about safely, again, regardless of their mode of I wanted to point out that Vision Zero is not a one-size-fits-all approach to traffic safety. And while the ethical stance on preventing fatalities and traumatic injuries is an absolute requirement of Vision Zero and all of the cities that adopt it, the methods to achieve this do very greatly to fit the infrastructure, the density, and the needs of each community. This is exactly what makes this framework effective. It allows cities to develop their own specific strategies to target and eliminate traffic fatalities. So with that, I will turn it over to Suresh Ragavendra from AECOM, who will do an overview of Vision Zero, and talk a little bit about AECOM, which has national expertise in working with different cities and their Vision Zero frameworks.
Thanks, Mylan. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. Continuing on what Mylan said, there are about 40 communities across the country that have adopted the Vision Zero framework. I want to stress, to tailor to their communities, and to their needs, and to their problems, to come up with their own unique solution to solve those problems. Vision Zero does not prescribe a solution by itself, it doesn't presuppose any of the solutions. It really is a data-driven process to look at the conditions within our city and come up with our own solution. So, how is it different? As Mylan mentioned, a lot of the design principles that we follow is in line with the safety, that the Vision Zero approach, excuse me, which is the objective of the Vision Zero approach. In the traditional approach, it was assumed that traffic deaths are inevitable. Vision Zero very clearly assumes or prescribes that traffic deaths are preventable. Vision Zero assumes that human behavior is perfect, and that all we need to do is to prevent collisions. Vision Zero integrates human failing into its approach, and we all make mistakes. We need to, we need to have a system that would accommodate those mistakes, that allows for those mistakes, and still prevent fatal and severe crashes. The traditional approach puts the responsibility on the individual. Vision Zero has a system-wide approach, which includes technologies that we have, which includes the solutions that we are currently prescribing for safety. And finally, traditional approach says saving lives is expensive. Vision Zero says saving lives is not expensive. One life saved is worth the effort of having this framework. So, what does it take for a city to become a Vision Zero city? Number one, we need to have a goal to have zero traffic fatalities or severe injuries. And the second one, I think the council members' comments were right on in getting schools involved. I would, Vision Zero goes beyond that into the community at large. That community needs to be involved for this framework to work. The next, more important thing is that we need to have our leaders, our elected officials, particularly Mayor and Council, commit to the Vision Zero effort. And in the last one, I know it's been said a couple of times, but we need to develop a Vision Zero action plan that is Phoenix-specific. And with that, I'll hand it back to Mario.
Thank you very much, Suresh. Thank you, Mayor and Council. And so, as we conclude the presentation today, our recommendation is really just to ask for the council to authorize staff to develop a Vision Zero framework for the city, specific to the City of Phoenix, and return to the Aviation and Transportation Subcommittee for further action and consideration for possible recommendation to the City Council. And with that, staff is available to answer questions.
Wonderful, thank you. We have about 20 residents wishing to speak, so I'd like, if people have clarifying questions for the presenters, we can take those now. But I think we're going to have a robust debate, but I'd like to hear from the residents.
I would like to ask staff some questions that were, oh, I'm sorry.
Can we do clarifying questions now, and then?
Well, just why they left off certain information from their report.
That's, can we, okay, we'll just, we've got 20 residents.
I know, but I'd like to ask staff a very clear question. But it's up to you, Mayor. If you don't want me to do it now, wait.
Perfect. We will get through the residents. And thank, there's, we have many people on both sides, so appreciate you giving up your time to come down and have us have a good debate. I think this is a very personal issue for many people, and there are a few people here who are here because they lost loved ones, so would ask everyone to be respectful of people on both sides of the debates. Our first speaker will be Dr. Robert Cannon, followed by Flo Eckstein.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak today. I'm Dr. Robert Cannon, President of the Willow Neighborhood Historic Association. I've lived in Willow 20 years. I've been either the President or Vice President 10 out of those 20. And I appreciate everyone's time and energy today on a very serious issue in our neighborhood. So I'm going to localize this issue. And two years ago, when I returned to the President of the neighborhood, we developed a plan called Vision 3.5, which is Third and Fifth Avenues redesign of those two streets. So I'm excited to hear the word vision, strategic vision, to collaborate with the city to reduce pedestrian fatalities. In the Willow neighborhood, we have more children than ever. The Willow Neighborhood Association is the largest neighborhood in the City of Phoenix. We have multiple traffic patterns on Third and Fifth Avenues, for example. Our plan has requested the following. For example, on Third Avenue, we like to remain, the Third Avenue to remain one-way, one-lane. On Fifth Avenue, one-lane, one-way. And specifically, on Third Avenue, we are requesting that we be consistent with the Roosevelt neighborhood, so there's some consistent traffic patterns. Right now, if you travel Third Avenue through city, through the multiple historic districts, you will face three different traffic patterns. So we're asking for some vision, some systems, some safety to protect our neighborhoods. As I mentioned earlier, we have more children living in the Willow district. We strongly support safer streets. We support Vision Zero, and we will look forward to working collaboratively with the city to achieve mutual respect, collaboration, and safety for all Phoenix residents. And most importantly, I'd like to read a section from page 18, from the Willow Conservation Plan. I know many Phoenix residents may or may not realize the Willow I know many Phoenix residents may or may not realize, the Willow Conservation Plan was adopted by the city many years ago. It's preserved as the foundation for the neighborhood, which exists from Central to Seventh, Thomas to McDowell. So, I'd like to read page 18, section four, which will
If it's brief.
Reinforce the message today. Circulation of traffic in which adults and children can get around easily, and safety whether by car, vehicle, or foot. Design the traffic systems to reduce internal traffic and safety. So with that, I thank you all very much for your time, and I appreciate the hard work everyone on this table has done. And most importantly, thank you for all the hard work on the budget meetings last week, as we are represented, because we know funding is the next issue. So, thank you. I know, Laura, you're smiling at me, so thank you.
Thank you. And we have two minutes per speaker. We have Flo Eckstein, followed by Tom Chauncey.
Good afternoon, Mayor Gallego, members of the city council. I'm Flo Eckstein, a Phoenix native and a resident of District Six. I'm here to ask the council, at the appropriate time, to adopt Vision Zero, a comprehensive strategy embraced by cities across our nation to significantly reduce traffic fatalities and injuries to pedestrians, bicyclists, motorcyclists, drivers, and passengers. I'm heartened by the excellent work of city staff to address pedestrian safety. Pedestrian safe passage across major streets is a citywide concern. I want to give you an example from my neighborhood. I live in north-central Phoenix, in a neighborhood bound by Seventh Street, Seventh Avenue, Glendale, and Northern Avenues, all arterial streets of five and six lanes. Except for the major lighted intersections, one-half to one mile apart, the only pedestrian crosswalk is on Glendale Avenue at Fourth Avenue for students walking to and from school. My family and our neighbors, including parents pushing little ones in strollers, and older adults must walk long distances to cross major streets at signal intersections or risk their lives, which they do every day, waiting for brakes in fast-moving traffic. Many neighborhoods, we know, have significantly greater challenges. I support the work of the city manager's office, based on intensive study and data and resource, moving toward what I hope will be the adoption of Vision Zero, establishing an inclusive strategy unique to Phoenix, committing to a specific timeframe, and involving a broad range of community stakeholders, including key city staff, school, and university officials, and residents. Lighting, speed limits, well-located and well-marked crosswalks, medians, traffic calming measures, education and enforcement, all can help protect our citizens from injury and death. Let's join our neighbor Tempe, which just adopted Vision Zero to lead our state in protecting lives. Thank you very much.
Tom will be followed by John Glenn.
Mayor, members, council, thank you very much for your time and attention. While I support the goals and appreciate the hard work and the intentions, I would ask that you please also consider the needs and include someone involved in the process that would be a traffic engineer involved with the goal of moving traffic in and out of the city. The law of unintended consequences has now given us the light rail system, which, when it was passed, did not show the curbs that protect the light rail. And as a result, it has cut our city in half, and it has forced condensed traffic at all the major intersections. The effort downtown on reducing the number of streets, lanes coming out, has forced more and more backup, more and more traffic, more and more idling, because of good intentions. I would just ask that the Vision 100 or the Vision Zero plan also include the needs of our community and its vibrancy and its growth. The firm that I represent has worked in downtown Phoenix for almost 100 years. We need traffic that comes in and out of downtown. If you restrict that to its logical end, if you really want to stop any sort of pedestrian deaths in our city, ban vehicles completely, or ban drunks, or ban people from using drugs and walking in the middle of the street. When you look at these statistics, over half were violating the law, walking across probably with their cellphone like this, so they can't see traffic that's coming. So, when you use a hammer or a sledgehammer to try to reduce something, please keep the other aspects in town important, and that is the vibrancy and the survivability of our downtown. Thank you for your time.
John Glenn, and we are joined by distinguished guests, including Congressman Shattuck today. After John Glenn, we'll have Courtney Shattuck.
Thank you. My name is John Glenn, 2302 North Central Avenue. I am a resident of District Four. I am here to speak in proud support of item number one, and encourage you all to help move this forward. Simply put, we have an epidemic of pedestrian incidences and intersections with vehicles in the city, and it's long overdue that we have some leadership at City Hall here. I'm certainly optimistic that the text ban that was signed into law yesterday will go a long way and long overdue, but I think we can certainly do a lot more at the grandular level and on the ground level. I think that this whole study is a more holistic approach that will go a long way in terms of helping identify specific problems. I'll tell real quickly, real briefly, a couple stories of mine. I choose to live in central Phoenix. I do that because I enjoy walking to places, I enjoy biking, I enjoy taking our fabulous light rail. Please stop attacking light rail. And so, I make those choices because I love living in a vibrant city. About a month and a half ago, I was crossing Fifth and McDowell and nearly hit by a car that was gunning it to run the red light there. Fortunately, I was paying attention. I was not on my cellphone, but I was paying enough attention, so therefore, I was able to avert that. At least every couple of weeks, I see and sometimes almost get hit by a vehicle trying to turn right northbound Central and Jefferson, when there's clearly no right turn on red. That's, I think, something else we need to study in this, is the intersection of light rail, pedestrians, and vehicles as well, because I just don't think people are either paying attention or awareness of these types of things. So, it's getting very, very dangerous out there, and we just simply need leadership for the council. So, in closing, if complete streets isn't the solution, if this isn't the solution, then I'm looking to all of you, all eight or nine of you, and asking you, what is the solution? Because I sure as heck shouldn't have to risk my life crossing the street or riding my bike to work. And so, I think it's just simply all about not prioritizing one of these modes of transportation over the other. It's about us all having to live together in a safe, nice city environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other side of the room. I just wanted to come up here and say that I understand that there's a lot of kind of emotions involved. If you have anyone in your family who has been affected by sort of a driver who has hit one of your family members, which is terrible, but I'm concerned about with Vision Zero, a kind of overreaction. So, I'm fine with the collecting data, but I feel like it seems in over 50% of these cases, there's alcohol involved, or pedestrians are outside of where they're supposed to be, or there's texting. And we, with things like reducing the speed limit, it's an overreaction to do that immediately. So, I think it's important to maybe look at what we're doing first before we jump into making these changes. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Perfect. Thank you. Chelsea Smith, followed by Ronald Sereni.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. My name is Chelsea Smith. I'm a resident of District Seven, and I fully support becoming a Vision Zero city. Recently, there has been a lot of attention drawn by some council members on lowering the speed limits and how that will impact drivers and traffic. And while that is an important piece of the puzzle into solving this problem, it's not the only one. The Vision Zero program is multifaceted and encourages using a variety of ways to lower fatalities on our city's streets. Simply writing off this program based on lowering speed limits alone and not considering the other tactics that have been mentioned is short-sighted. Doing many of the measures in Vision Zero will not only make streets safer for pedestrians, but will make streets safer for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Ronald Sereni, followed by Brooke Nissenbaum.
Good afternoon. I'm Ron Sereni. I'm from District Two. This proposed Vision Zero safety program has met criticism in New York City for failing to make the impact proposed when instituted. It seems as if the city is actually searching for new avenues of revenue to pay for the renovations of the Phoenix Suns Stadium instead of actually facilitating safety. This type of sweeping reform should be voted on by the people and not by the city council or subcommittee thereof. I would also request that every current and new red light camera installed be installed in a way that it is actually linked with the pedestrian crosswalk timer with the yellow light, then it could actually facilitate an actual impact. Instead of just drumming up the fees, fines, and citations to build up the budget fund or fund the Clean Elections Campaign Fund, furthermore, it proves to me that if we don't use these measures, that it is only the fact that we need to vote in libertarians into these boards and councils to actually prevent us, or prevent those who believe we can legislate safety or save everyone from every danger at all time, it takes individual responsibility at these crosswalks, whether you're driving or walking. Those who would give up essential liberty to purchase a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety, and will receive neither. Thanks.
Brooke will be followed by Ryan Hartwig.
Mayor and council, my name is Brooke. I'm the Community Planning Manager at Local First Arizona, and I'm speaking today in favor of allowing the city to create a Vision Zero framework. Pedestrian fatalities are rising at a disproportionate rate in the valley, and while the council members from Districts One and Six have falsely claimed this policy will require a blanket speed limit reduction for the city, I'm sure they know that according to Arizona Revised Statutes 28-703, that would not be legal, and it is not what Vision Zero calls for. Safe, walkable streets are better for all street users, the environment, and our small business community. Finally, several studies have concluded that reduced speeds, particularly those around 35 miles per hour, do not contribute to congestion and actually move traffic more efficiently. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ryan will be followed by CJ Hager.
Hi, my name is Ryan Hartwig, and I live in District Five, and I have a bachelor's degree in Spanish linguistics from ASU. So, I just want to make a couple of points. There's some peer-reviewed research by John Lambert titled, "Do Crash Rates Really Increase With Increases in Average Speed?" And I'm sure Suresh here has done this, read this research. So, I just want to highlight a few points. They say, "Speed alone never defines safe driving. It is speed and clearance distance that underlies safe driving." Talks about traffic flow, talks about how the highest-speed roads have the lowest fatality crash rates, and speed alone never describes safe driving. So, there's a lot of different factors, it's very complex. So, I just want to urge you to do more research, partner with ASU, do more research about it. I also referenced an NTSB study recently on pedestrian deaths, and they talk about how, you know, we have the factors such as road type, driver age, alcohol impairment. And in that research, which is a lot more, which had a lot of data, they referenced, they said that six of 13 pedestrians were intoxicated, and eight of 15 pedestrians were on their cellphone. So, that's also very important to increase enforcement. So, a lot of this has to do with enforcement. It's like with the texting law that just went into effect, how do you enforce that So, they mention the conclusions, the NTSB mentions, "You need localized pedestrian data." So, I think it's a good step that they've, Phoenix has tried to collect more data. It's not enough data, but it's a step in the right direction. So, those are my main points. I do have some research, a graph here from the NTSB study, and it's showing actually from 40 to, if you decrease the speed from 40 to 30, there's actually more fatalities in the 30 to 35 mile per hour range than in the 40 to 45 mile per hour range. Thank you.
Thank you. CJ Hager will be followed by Jessica Baranco.
My name is CJ Eisenbarth-Hager, and I'm a resident of District Four, and I also work for Vitalist Health Foundation on healthy community policies. And I'm here today to talk in support of the Vision Zero concept. Residents of Phoenix want a city where they can walk, bike, and take transit safely. And we've heard that through processes like the General Plan, Reinvent Phoenix, and the Sustainability Plan. Vision Zero is an important and visible step in addressing one of the biggest barriers to walking, biking, and taking transit, which is the fear of being hit by a car. Vision Zero recognizes that traffic safety is not just a traffic problem to be solved by traffic engineers. It also recognizes that the 92 men, women, and children who died last year on our streets, those were not inevitable deaths. Traffic safety is a public health problem, and as such, needs a comprehensive approach that includes perspectives beyond traffic engineers, and should include folks like public health professionals and those who walk, bike, and take transit on a daily basis. As we move forward with this discussion, I'd urge us to keep four concepts in mind. The first one is that responses to crashes need to be tailored to the environment. We've heard about the no-size-fits-all approach. We have to know the on-the-ground conditions that are leading to the crashes. Second is, we shouldn't be blaming the victims. Successful Vision Zero approaches have removed blame completely. Many factors contribute to crashes, and blaming the victim fails to recognize the complex nature of crashes. Third is, certain people and places are more vulnerable to crashes. Older adults, people of color, and people walking in low-income communities are disproportionately represented in fatal crashes. We need to focus on these people and these places. And lastly, and most importantly, Vision Zero, successful Vision Zero processes are transparent and deeply connected to those who walk, bike, and take transit on a daily basis. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jessica will be followed by Doug Fry.
Good afternoon, Mayor Gallego and city council members. I'm here to speak briefly in support of Phoenix developing a Vision Zero program. My name is Jessica Baranco. The statistics of fatalities and serious injury are absolutely staggering. We are the fifth-largest city in the nation. Thriving cities have robust downtowns, and robust downtowns rely heavily on attracting pedestrians. If we consider ourselves an urban leader, which I believe we are, it is incumbent on us to make pedestrian safety a top priority. I strongly urge us also to consider those who do not rely on vehicles as their primary source of transportation. I am thinking particularly about the elderly and non-drivers and children. This is an opportunity, it seems to me, for Phoenix to lead. Phoenix historically has been a city driven by vehicles, and it's now an opportunity for us to lead in the West and Southwest as a major city, encouraging the protection and safety of our pedestrians. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Doug will be followed by Eric Cole.
Thank you, mayor. My name's Doug Fry. Jim Waring, you're my councilperson. We met one day at my front door. Thank you for stopping by. Sal, thanks for the email. I appreciate it. I'm coming as a person that doesn't have a shoe in the box. I'm keeping an open mind on this, but we have to remember that pedestrians have laws that they must follow, just as the vehicles. Vision Zero, I'm going to do more research on Vision Zero. I don't know if I like it or dislike it. I know that we're not Boston. I also know that we have arteries, major arteries, that traffic flow goes in and out of the downtown area. We have traffic patterns that go in and out of West Phoenix, North Phoenix, East Phoenix, South Phoenix. We have traffic jams on McDowell between 24th Street and 19th Avenue that are ridiculous. Why? Because we've got a light rail system. We've got a train at 19th Avenue. That train's been there since I've been here, since 1970. It's been there long before then. We've got to bring everything into perspective here. Mayor, if you're going to have an advisory council Mayor, if you're going to have an advisory council, I would appreciate it if you have a citizens advisory council along with them. Put me on it. I would appreciate it. We need some truthfulness in the situation here. I understand children have been killed. I understand people have been killed. But I also drive these streets. I'm a Realtor in this city. I drive these streets on a daily basis. I see traffic that is disgusting. I see city buses that run red lights. I see taxi cabs, and well, they're not taxi cabs anymore, they're Lyft, and things like that, driving at 95 miles an hour. You deregulated it so that we could have Lyft and those guys. At least the cab drivers used to drive sanely. So, folks, open minds, please, open minds. My heartfelt appreciation for everybody that's working on this, and for those that have lost lives. Trust me, I was there. 20 years ago, I had a near fatal traffic accident because of some woman was out in the world in the ozone. So, ladies and gentlemen, thank you again.
Eric Cole will be followed by Dan, I think it's Farley, but it might be Farsi.
Mr. Council, thank you for coming in. So, it's a little bit of a user fee, to my mind.
Exactly. So, the traffic load, or whether it's houses going in, where...
...campus, and I'm in the Watts College of Public Service and Community Solutions. It was mentioned earlier, the ongoing conversations that ASU has had with the department and with the police department, my colleague Mike Scott, who is embedded within the PD and working. We're here to be supportive as both anchor institution that is in Tempe, where Vision Zero is being addressed, as well as in downtown Phoenix. We stand ready to work with you from a professional standpoint. We've already got seven or eight professional academics engaged, from engineering to human issues, as well as urban planning and design. So, we stand ready to help with community engagement and discussion as needed and as we can be supportive. My work is involved in the Maryvale community, and this issue has come up through our organic conversations with community members. Youth-led interviewing has found that folks have expressed to us, one of the issues around the mid-block crossings is having to choose between being late for work or jaywalking in order to catch a bus. And so, I ask us all to remember, in those communities, in many communities, being a pedestrian's not a choice. It's a requirement of getting to work, getting to church, and getting to storefronts. So, we, as ASU, are ready to help you work on this issue going forward, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Dan will be followed by Lucy Marshall.
Thank you. My name's Dan Farley. I am speaking in opposition of Vision Zero. This proposal has gotten quite a bit of buzz in my sphere. There are highlights of the opinions voiced, so I'm just going to run through those briefly and then turn it back over to you. Many feel this is a camel nose under the tent against car transportation in favor of mass transportation. This appears like an attempt to frustrate car drivers in favor of mass transportation, even though elderly and others would prefer not to walk in 115-degree heat in the summer to mass transit, or make themselves more susceptible to mugging or terrorism on mass transit if it was used more. The research I've reviewed from Boston, where this was implemented, shows that people did not slow down, but citations went up and insurance rates went up. This will impact the efficiency of transportation. It will likely impact the decisions about doing business in the city in time. Traffic engineers should be involved in the process of changes. We're on the cusp of autonomous vehicles, with more active safety management systems within them, which means variables on the road are in the process of changing. Furthermore, mass transit becomes increasingly obsolete when there are autonomous vehicles. I can tell you, when I visited Washington DC, they had spent a fortune on a subway system that was hardly used because Uber could pick you up right where you were, and you didn't have to walk to it. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
Lucy will be followed by Opal Wagner.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. My name is Lucy Marshall, and I've lived in Phoenix for the past 23 years. I don't have a compelling story, but I do have a perspective that is carefully thought out, shared widely by my friends and neighbors, and important for you to hear. My youngest child graduated from our neighborhood school last year, ending an 18-year stretch for me, having children in a school within walking and biking distance. A constant discussion among parents was a balance between, on the one hand, safety for our kids, which translates into not letting them walk or bike, or go outside near a street, and, on the other hand, the need for them to learn independence and responsibility, help out the family as a whole, and get exercise. The Vision Zero program puts kids and families first in our neighborhoods and on our streets. I hope that Phoenix will adopt this program.
Opal will be followed by Dr. Marvin Borsen.
Mayor Gallego and Council Members, my name is Opal Wagner. I live at 330 West Coronado Road in the Willow Historic District, and I came down here to speak today because I am concerned about traffic safety in my own neighborhood. As we've welcomed more and more residents into Midtown Phoenix, Third and Fifth Avenues have essentially become an expressway for people who are trying to avoid traffic backups on Seventh Avenue, and this has posed incredible fear in our neighborhood that we are going to have a tragedy. It is very hard to cross the street sometimes, just within our neighborhood. I don't, didn't hear it mentioned, but I want to, I think it should be on the record, that in its 2016 report, the National Highway Traffic and Safety Association named the city of Phoenix the deadliest city for pedestrians in the US. And that is based on, the metric was pedestrian fatalities per 100,000 population. I am not a traffic engineer. I'm a registered nurse, and I think this should be looked at as an urgent public health issue, and I think we are in desperate need of a comprehensive solution to reverse the troubling trend of pedestrian deaths. And I want to echo what a previous speaker said. Blaming the victim, whether it's an impaired person or not, is neither a solution nor a strategy for solving this problem. I think adopting Vision Zero would be a great start at coming up with a framework that would begin to address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Marvin will be followed by Jacob Harvey.
Thank you, Marvin Borsen. I rise to speak to you as just my experience as a bicycle rider for about 24 years, about four and a half miles each way, and on a main arterial road, and I mainly stayed on the sidewalks. And I would tell you, as I watched, it wasn't speeding. It really was related to people on cellphones mainly and not paying attention. And, you know, I watched very carefully. Fortunately, I never got hit, but as you think about Vision Zero, I don't know a lot about it, but I'm kind of concerned about what the costs are there, and I certainly appreciate that there's a significant problem here. I know we also have a problem with our pensions. I know we have problems with our streets that need to be paid attention to, too. I'm on the Arcadia Camelback Mountain Neighborhood Association, and we'd like to be involved, or I would like to be involved as well, to maybe that can help cut costs if you have community members involved with this, and hopefully that we can assist, or I can assist in some way. I can't speak for them. They didn't send me here. I came on my own. I think, as you look at arterial, is 78% of the statistic that they gave, and as I look at these people, it wasn't the speed. It was really paying attention on the cellphones was the main issue. Thank you.
My name is Jake Harvey, and I'm a proud Phoenician. I just moved from District Four back downtown into District Seven, and I use all modes of transportation to live my life, to go to work, and I mostly drive, and I support Vision Zero. I feel like we are being offered a false choice when it comes to people who use vehicles. Vision Zero is not trying to eliminate cars, and I think it's irresponsible for members of this council to offer that as a suggestion. We know what the problem is. It's very clear what the problem is. These individuals have solutions. There are solutions that other cities are adopting, and it's time that this city adopts some as well. What we are, what I'm unsure of is whether or not we have the moral commitment to do what's right here. So, I'm asking this body to do what's right, to do what's best for all Phoenicians, whether you use light rail, whether you drive, whether you walk, and to do something to move this city forward to be a city of the future. Thank you.
Thank you. We have eight additional cards in support of the agenda item. We have three additional cards in opposition to the item. One of them is from our Citizens Transportation Commissioner Roy Miller, who writes, he has philosophical opposition to Vision Zero because zero pedestrian deaths is not an achievable goal. All right. That concludes all of the cards I have. Councilman Noakowski.
Mayor, I just have a question for staff. Maybe the expert on the ACOM individual. One of the things that I heard at, I hosted a budget hearing along with Councilmember Pastor, and that was in Candle Park area, and they were concerned about this, what they call the suicide lanes, or the reversible lanes down Seventh Street and Seventh Avenue, and that one of the things that they were concerned about is that those lanes are actually butted up on some households, some houses that are right on Seventh Avenue. So, individuals pull into their homes, but at the same time, when they're trying to pull out, they don't have a middle lane to actually move into traffic or so. Your opinion, is there other big cities within the downtown area with these types of reversible lanes, or what we call here in Phoenix, suicide lanes?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, I think it's one of the points of Vision Zero that I wanted to stress upon is that there needs to be a solution for the city and for the conditions that we have within the city. And the example that you bring up is a very specific case that we need to look at, and if that happens to be one of the areas that we need to come up with a solution that suits, then that should go into the analysis, if the reversible lanes that we have on Seventh and Seventh Avenue, how they're contributing, if at all they're contributing to the condition that we have, and what is the solution that we need to look at. In answer to your question, are there other cities in the country that have reversible lanes? I don't know specifically the cities that do, and especially within the downtown, but I can definitely look that up and bring that information back.
All right. Thank you.
I would just like to make a comment on the reversible lanes. So, with Vision Zero, because of the reversible lanes, there have been fatalities, pedestrian fatalities, and also car crashes. And so, I would like that to be part of, if we move forward, of the Vision Zero piece. Thank you, Councilman Noakowski.
Councilman DeCiccio, and then Councilwoman Guevara.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, and, you know, people know that I'm very direct, I will not be supporting an overall plan for the city of Phoenix called Vision Zero. Right now, if you really want to fix the roads, if you look at the correlations of deaths that started in 2014 to today, and the reason that there's been such an uptick is because our roads are in danger, and they're an embarrassment, and they're full of potholes. A week ago, about a week, two weeks ago, we had an individual hit a pothole on a bike, was hospitalized for three weeks. Right now, you don't have to pass an overall plan. Each council member, right now, today, can work with city staff to come up with a plan for their own area and hit some hotspots. I'd be fully supportive of looking at three or four hotspots in the city of Phoenix, or working with each of the council members here to make a determination what they want to have done. But if you end up narrowing the roads, here's what's going to happen. You're going to increase congestion, and you're going to lose economic development. You're going to lose it. But if each council member up here wants to do something in their own district without passing an overall plan that I believe is going to be problematic, then they should be able to do this on their own in their own district, because then they're going to be held accountable to the voters. The voters themselves will make a determination whether or not that council member did the right thing for them for their own district. In my district, I want the roads repaired. I want them to be brought up exactly the way they are right now. I want them to be paved. I want all the potholes fixed. I want my roads in my district to be safe, again, by getting rid of all those potholes and making them safe and redoing them the way they are. That's where I would like to go, and I'd like to be a part of that. So, if everybody's going to get some monies to do whatever it is that they're going to be doing in their own district, my district needs that done today. The city of Phoenix, and correct me if I'm wrong, we have $1.6 billion that's needed today to repair our roads and bring them up to standard. Is that correct, Kinni?
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, that's correct, as far as the information we provided when we were talking about the $200 million advancement for T2050 funds.
So, just to bring our roads up to standard today, not five years from now, not seven years from now, we need $1.6 billion. We don't have a plan to fix them all today. It's being done over a small amount of miles every year, being repaired. So, in my district, what I need, I need the potholes fixed. I don't want to see any more spider webs in there. I want my roads to look good. I want my quality of life in my district to be upgraded, and the way to upgrade it is to have a better look. If you end up narrowing these roads, lowering the speed limits to 25 miles an hour like they did in Boston, or whatever it is you end up doing, you're going to lose your quality of life. You will lose that. People will not want to drive. People will not want to live in your area. But if each council member up here wants to do it in their own area, I don't have a problem with that. They can choose that, because then they're going to be held responsible by their own voters. I would, you know, from my end of it, I know what I'd like to have done in my district. I want my roads to be upgraded. The other part of it, too, is if you look at it, back in 2010, the city of Phoenix adopted a policy that really started lowering the, reducing the number of police officers that we have. So, you have a direct correlation between the lack of police officers, one of our lowest levels per population, and at the same time, the roads have become a disaster in the city of Phoenix with no plan to do that. This is all good and fine, but if you really want to focus on those things that really are going to have an impact, that is where we ought to be focused on. The, let me go through my notes here without going through all the hotspots that we need to do. For example, we had an individual from the Willow neighborhood. If they want to do that, let's work on that. Suicide lanes. If you want to get rid of those suicide lanes, put that on the agenda. Put it on the agenda to get rid of. But I do know that the districts out further north are going to have a lot of problems with that. Anytime you do a road reduction, District Three and District Two in particular are going to have major issues once you get rid of those suicide lanes. Remember the battles that we've had here? It's been that way. Well, if you want to reduce them, go do it. Go do it and fight that battle. This can be done today without having to do an overall thing for the entire city of Phoenix, because I find this as a problem for my own district. I don't want this in my district. I want my roads repaired. I want to be very clear about that. If people want to reduce traffic, let them do that, or they're going to increase congestion and traffic and smog. Let me go through my other notes. I've got like a ton of notes here, guys, so, but I don't want to capitalize all of this either. So, if you look at Vision Zero, it limits streets to no more than 25 miles per hour. They use a metric of 30 kilometers per hour, which is really 19 miles per hour, but in the US right now, what they're looking at is 25 miles per hour. The second thing that it does is it, you know, pushes a citywide road narrowing and lane reductions on every street. In the third, it redesigns streets to walking and biking and mass transit without any regard to autos, and to not look at those individuals. No one wants anybody to die. We just don't. Not one person up here would say that they would advocate that. We don't. We want to make it as safe as possible out there, but you have to look at those individuals and say, blaming the victim, yeah, you're going to have to blame them. If they're out there drinking, doing drugs, and they push themselves out in the middle of the street, and some individual hits them, that is their responsibility. They created the problem, not the driver. The driver did not create that problem. The driver is now a victim here, too, because their life is changed forever. You hit somebody, you have a problem like that. That driver, who wasn't under the influence, did everything right, has now become the victim here, too. And we've got to look at that. The drivers themselves have become... The drivers themselves have become the victims in these situations, because they ended up, an individual who was decided to do drugs, decided to get in the middle of the road, now became the problem, and that driver now has to deal with that for the rest of their lives. They have to remember that. And that's something else that we ought to be looking at. So just to be clear again, none of this needs to be passed on a citywide. I know what needs to be done in my district. If individuals want to do that, they can do that today in their own areas, in their own district. So I'll be voting against the overall plan, but if people want to do research, find three or four hotspots, and work with each of the council members, I would be supportive of that, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Mayor, thank you. Just a couple of questions. Is there any plan for the city of Phoenix to implement, without any discussion or data, a blanket citywide reduction of speed limits?
Mayor, Councilwoman Guevara, no. No, that's not.
Thank you. I think that it's great that a number of other major cities have adopted Vision Zero, and I'm guessing there are probably some lessons to learn from their experience, but just to be clear, Vision Zero isn't a one-size-fits-all plan, is it? Phoenix can use data and community input to help create our own plan?
Mayor, Councilwoman Guevara, yes. The idea with, as we've talked about with Vision Zero, is very adaptable to the context of the city, and recognizes that different areas have different needs, have different land use, have different structure in place, and so all of that would be analyzed. No changes would actually happen without being part of a council-adopted plan.
Okay, and just to follow up, so it sounds like what you're saying is that not only can Phoenix come up with a specific plan to the needs in our city, but that plan can take into account the different parts of the city, so that ways, so that the ways we increase pedestrian safety in West Phoenix might be different than the things we'd look at in downtown Phoenix?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Stark, and then Pastor.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a brother who lives in Portland, and they have Vision Zero, and I will tell you, they did not reduce all the speed limits in the city of Portland. There were a few streets, they were largely residential, and they reduced the speed from 30 to 25 miles per hour. In Portland, they're still paving streets like we're paving streets. One of the concerns they had in Portland was enforcing the current speed limits. And we do have a lot of speeders, and so I think an important component of looking at Vision Zero is, how do we better enforce? And it's not just the people driving. It is jaywalking. It is some of the other issues. Again, I think this program is a one-size-fits-all. We're not like Portland. We're not like Boston. We're Phoenix. We are more car-dominated. So I think that would be an important thing to look at when you're looking at Vision Zero. The one question I have is, are you going to have a lot of public input? I'm guessing, yes, you're probably going to work through the villages and neighborhood needs, much like you did when we were looking at the interactive map to try to collect data on streets that do need to be paved. So would that be occurring as part of this program?
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, I'll let Keeney explain a little bit more about what you're talking about with his streets mapping tool, but absolutely the community involvement piece would be integral to this and would need to be extensive.
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, exactly that is how we, you're exactly right how we would approach it. From a public and community engagement perspective, anything we do with Vision Zero, and just the Vision Zero itself is requiring us to do the community engagement, but that's something we would want to do just because of the specific elements. As Mylan had mentioned before, we're 500 square mile city, so we need to have that community engagement, able to make sure if we're directed to go implement a plan or put together a plan, that we do have that kind of community engagement, to be able to come up with something that works for our city.
So the people here today who say they want to be a part of the process can be a part of the process, correct?
Correct.
And because you may live in District Two or Three, where we do need the sevens, by the way, I do agree with that, that would still be a part of the dialogue, and you're going to actually look at different parts of the cities in a different way, right? I mean, some parts of the city are more pedestrian, have more bikes.
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, that's exactly correct. If you look at, you know, one of the things we've already been using and looking at is that heat map, those hotspots. If you look at that, those aren't evenly distributed around the city. So the solutions we implement for, would potentially implement for locations where you have high incidence of pedestrian fatalities or injuries are going to be different from where you would have another area of the city where you don't have necessarily those kind of incidents. But I also say that the certain areas of the city are older, and the streets are older, and the way we design streets are older than what we're doing today when we have areas of the city and, you know, north areas of the city, or even where we have high-growth areas in Levine, we are designing streets differently and building streets differently than we did 10, 20, 30 years ago.
And then just lastly, some of the things you'll look at, too, will be like additional medians. I know I have a neighborhood that wants to see medians on a major street, because they see that as a safety issue. So you are going to involve elected officials, your elected officials, the different districts, and so we can convey to you what we're hearing as well as far as safety issues.
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, that's exactly right. We want to involve every component of this from a community engagement perspective, especially our elected officials. But I know Mylan would probably, you know, kick me under the table if I didn't say this as well. Part of it is we have a street network out there, and we need to make sure the solutions are in line with what our land uses are. If we have a multifamily residence complex that is across the street from a grocery store, we need to make sure we're providing safe crossings. And you mentioned the median islands, and those providing refuge for pedestrians crossing busy streets doesn't necessarily mean you reduce lanes of traffic and things like that, but you provide safe access and crossing of our major streets to make sure that people have the ability to use them safely without having to worry about injuries or fatalities.
Mayor, thank you. I'm going to support this. I think it's important that we look at our safety issues. This isn't just about pedestrians. This is also about people and vehicles. So I think this is a good step, and it doesn't necessarily mean if they come back with a recommendation, we may find out that it doesn't work in Phoenix, that maybe there's something else we should be looking at. But I think it's worth the effort to study and look at it.
Thank you. Councilwoman.
So if you look at this map, and you study it, and you see where really the hotspots, the red, 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 red spots, that happens to be the heart of the city, which I represent, District Four, and I happen to have, it's unfortunately to have the most fatalities within the area within this report. On top of that, then it happens in the heart, so it's in the center, and then it moves out to the sevens, and then it moves out to the avenues, and then you start to see how it grows. So many people, like 35th Avenue and Montarosa, India School, that area, we had a fatality, like Councilman Nowakowski had, and 39th Avenue and Southern Avenue. 27th Avenue between, just 27th Avenue alone is just a pass-through, a mini freeway, kind of like the sevens. And just alone on 27th Avenue, just looking at that whole corridor, all the way up to, and it hits three different council areas. It hits District Four, District Five, and Councilwoman Thelda Williams, I think, wanted to say District One. So it hits several of us. I think it's important to look at the whole city, the city as a whole, and not as a silo fashion. And when we start to silo each council area, then it's not, there's a ripple effect that happens with all our streets across our districts, because we all have borders, we all touch one another, our council, and we, and the streets don't know districts. The streets continue, and you don't know which district you're driving in, and why do certain things happen here and why not over here? So I think it's a wise idea to look at it in a global way, a holistic way, as to how all our streets operate, because it's really about the quality of life and making, it's really about safety of everyone's life, no matter what. My question, though, is, in this process, in this framework, as we discussed, because I think what we're doing today is really asking staff to go and review the components of Vision Zero. We're not voting on today Vision Zero. It's really about the components and looking to see if we fit in it, and if we don't, or if we want to accept it or not. That's a future vote, that's for the future. My question is, though, in talking through this, because I know we have many different plans, in particular Complete Streets and Shade and all the plans, at one point, we had asked for all the plans to be analyzed and looked at that. So I believe we are doing some of the steps in Vision Zero. And I think that's important, to put it in a framework. The other piece is, I want to look, understand if smart city comes into play with this, because for me, smart city has to do with traffic lights, and how becoming a smart city has to do with all the different signals, and the way we cross, and how we cross, and how we time, and how we move traffic. So I'm hoping that that is part of the framework, because I haven't studied really all the frameworks and the components, but I'm hoping that we do look at that, because we do need to realize we need to become a smart city in the timing of all our lights. Thirdly, in looking at our traffic patterns and looking at the dynamics of the future, what does the dynamics of our growth, as we're growing, the heart of the city is growing really rapidly, when we're adding more multifamily or housing in the area, and we're looking at traffic patterns and moving them, how does that affect our neighborhoods? And what is the cut-through traffic then happen through our neighborhoods? We already have cut-through traffic happening in our neighborhoods. They're already, Medlock and Willow, St. Francis, I can probably name more, are having this experience, and so we're looking at solutions to, to not necessarily stop it, but slow it down. And what I'm getting requests in the heart of the city is, can we put gates all around our, or close streets? And so I think that's a conversation we need to have in the future, as we're looking at a traffic pattern and traffic movement and slowing it down, what does that look like? I'm not sure necessarily about the speed limits. I just think that what will happen is, and that will be a conversation for the future, I don't know anything about the speed limits that are, that is being talked about. But as a great city as we are, we're very transparent, which means the community is always involved. And so I just want to get some clarity as to, will that be part of some of the framework?
So, Councilwoman Pastor, the community involvement will absolutely be a part of the framework. That's, when it comes to Vision Zero, that's one of the main components, is ensuring that the community involvement is built in to any of the plans that are developed, and to ongoing data analysis. And so we will continue to look at that and make sure that that's built into anything that goes on and brought back to the city council.
And will it look at, in these patterns, cut-through traffic, the sevens, smart city?
Yeah, you mentioned the smart cities. One of the things that was talked about earlier was the systems approach to addressing the traffic fatalities issue, and that's when, where the technology comes into play, and the use of technology to build, help build new infrastructure improvements that actually address the issue of pedestrian safety, and that's absolutely a key component of becoming a smart city, is that use of technology on our traffic signals, hawk signals, and how they're timed, and how that can enhance pedestrian safety. I know that, I know that other cities have done similar endeavors with the timing of their traffic signals to help actually slow cars down, because if vehicles know that they need to retain or stay at a certain speed in order to make all the green lights, then they actually do slow down to do that. And so those are some of the things that can be effective in us becoming a smart city, as well as addressing traffic safety. And the other components are certainly things that we can look at, the cut-through traffic, because we know that the neighborhood safety issue is there as well, and that's an analysis that would be built into the data evaluation, making sure that neighborhood cut-through traffic is something that we look at and make part of the evaluation. And you've asked for a look at the streets on Seventh Street and Seventh Avenue as well.
Councilman Waring.
Thank you. So I'm looking at the statistics again, and just to summarize what we talked about before, probably my guess, looking at this, it does not delineate by age, and these are all tragedies. But my guess is, a majority of the adults were hurt or killed in these tragedies, when I look at the statistics provided by the city, were intoxicated, crossing a major arterial at dark, not in a crosswalk. That's not victim blaming. Those are statistics provided by the city. At some point, we can't ignore those facts. They are what they are. And so we didn't need a study to tell us that that behavior is risky and could cause problems. Councilman DeCiccio illustrated, I think, very poignantly, the problem for the driver who will carry that with them forever. And that is also a tragedy. Again, I'm not blaming the victims, but I don't think any of us, we're all, I think, smart people, we don't need a study or a national movement or anything else to ask our citizens, we really would appreciate if you moderate your behavior a little bit, because this is having real-world consequences for everyone. You know, I think our districts are different. You know, I get that we're all interrelated, but my district is very different than the downtown districts in terms of traffic flow and how the streets are laid out and so forth. I mentioned the hawk earlier on Scottsdale Road and the streets on Bell between 44th and 52nd. I don't think we're always as consistent, even within our own spheres of influence. I didn't understand how a hawk, which comes on sometimes and not others, and drivers, I can, I go by a hawk every day, or at least every day when I drop my kids off at school, and people don't even know how to react to that. It kind of pops up. You can just see the confusion from drivers. So I didn't understand how it made sense to put in a hawk when you have light, 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 hawk, light, light, but you didn't want to put in a light between 52nd and 44th Street. People know what the lights do. Now, they may not stop at the red lights, that's a different problem. I'm not saying the driving is perfect out there. I definitely understand that. But, but if you put out a new thing that people aren't used to, same with the traffic circles, it just throws an already bad situation into, I would argue, even more chaos. I see it when I drive on Scottsdale Road, people kind of slam on the brakes. I do it, too. I know it's coming, because I know it's there, and I always sort of adjust. But when I hear us doing 45 more hawks, but we're only doing three or four traffic signals, and I think, what are we even doing longer? Obviously, our forefathers thought traffic lights were the way to go. Maybe, maybe we should focus on what we've been doing for years. You know, it's not perfect, but nothing's going to be perfect with the statistics that are laid out in front of us. You know, this is a lot of avoidable tragedy. Without making huge changes in behavior, we're not asking for one of those charts that you had in your presentation talked about, you know, before we were demanding perfection. I don't think we're demanding perfection, but you better be aware the streets are dangerous of your pedestrian and pay attention, and you can't be intoxicated crossing a major street at dark, not in a crosswalk, and expect it's going to be fine every single time. That is not a reasonable expectation. We cannot, as a society, say, you know what? That's our expectation. You're going to be able to do that, and nothing bad will ever happen. That's what Vision Whatever is kind of indicating should be the goal. That's not a realistic goal. I'm all for goals that are high and elevating, but that doesn't seem in any way realistic whatsoever. And we're going to spend a couple of years to study it? I don't know. Seems like maybe we could address things now. Look at the mix of lights versus hawks that we have planned. Three or four lights a year, that means a district like mine that has more streets than any district in the city might not get a light for a couple of years. I don't know. Okay. I just, I think that's a little misguided. I, I just, I think that's a little misguided. I just do. And I just, again, I'm not blaming victims, I'm simply looking at these as statistics. They're countable. It's just the way it shakes out. And we also have to, we have to hold citizens to a standard that's higher than, than, well, you know, we're not expecting to be perfect, just do as you will and we'll make sure you're safe. That's not a message we should be sending. That is not in any way a message we should be sending to anybody. So, I appreciate the time, Mayor. Thank you, I'm sorry for going on and on.
Thank you. And I do think it's important to note that while we have overall high levels of pedestrian fatalities, we also have higher-than our peers in terms of youth fatalities. And so we've had some real tragedies in this community. We had a young person in the district I used to represent who was killed riding a scooter and his family feels an additional traffic signal would have saved his life. And having, one of the hardest parts of this job for me is meeting with people who've lost their children, with parents who, who had to bury a young one. No parent should ever have to bury their child, it is such a tragedy. We, I met with the father of Casey Clark, whose daughter was walking along nineteen, Indian School at Nineteenth Avenue. She was not in an intersection and a car went over the barrier, over the curb, and killed her. Her family feels like if we had, and this is an intersection, as Councilwoman Pastor spoke very eloquently, where we've seen multiple tragic incidents. Her family has met with engineers who have made a very compelling case that if we put up a safe barrier, we could save lives in this area. So this, to me, is about safe barriers. It is also about traffic signals. And I certainly agree, we need to put more investment in that area. Want to applaud the work that Councilman Nowakowski and Mendoza did that was highlighted in this presentation in the Southern Avenue corridor. So I think, I think we have pretty broad agreement that that is an area where we'd like to move forward with. I also want to highlight some very successful projects we've had with crossings around schools. We know we have a lot of students who are running late and who might dart through the middle of a street and we've put up barriers, some very successful ones in District Six. Councilman Nowakowski worked on one in the Levine area that I believe has saved lives. And so to me, today is about, do we want to make a statement that this is a top priority? We're taking this very seriously? We've seen, since the time I was running for council to today, a doubling of pedestrian fatalities. Do we want to step up and send a message that we're looking hard at this, that we are working across departments, the police department, communications department, streets department, multiple areas of the city, all working together, saying, we want to have a safer city? So I guess we need to look at, at what are our top values and what are the common sense solutions? It seems like there are many, many areas where we all agree here, where we can move forward. Councilman Nowakowski, I think, and then Councilwoman Mendoza?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. So I just want to make it very clear for those individuals watching on television or, or after the meeting, they get the word. We've been doing everything that we've been talking about. There might be some portions of it missing, but I remember a year ago, having the same type of conversation here. And basically, what came out of that is actually hiring a coordinator for, for pedestrian safety. And from there, we talked about creating a program, and that program was Heads Up that came out of it, where we talked about Drive Safe, talking about how we can walk safer and actually bikes smarter also. So that campaign has been going on. It's not called Vision Zero. It, it was called Heads Up. So I think there's some things that I found out through being a part of that process of Heads Up, is that when we come to the, to our staff, we need traffic lights, we need crosswalks, we need street improvements, sidewalks. There's portions of my district, we don't even have sidewalks. And one of the things I get is, well, we're looking into it, this budget doesn't have it, but maybe the following year, you know, continue advocating. So what I need to do is go out to my community and we start to basically organize them to advocate to the city that there's a need for a sidewalk, there's a need for a traffic light, or there's a need for the different things that we're talking about today. So my concern is that if we come up with this Vision Zero for the city of Phoenix, do we have the resources, number one? Because I would hate to go out there and adopt something and we don't have the resources to actually complete this vision that we have. I know that, that's the number one thing I, I keep on asking, why can't we? Well, we have budget restraints. So I like to look at somehow some data of how we're going to cover this. If, is it in our general fund? Is there another source that we can tap into? I know with the hawk lights, we actually partner up with neighborhood association, businesses and schools to actually get those hawk lights done. With the street traffic lights, I know that when it comes to planning and zoning and there's new developments, we ask the developer and we kind of partner up with those opportunities that we have. So I know that we're doing that already, but at the same time, things where we can't create a new community because it's already built, how do we pay for that infrastructure? That's, that's my number one concern. The other concern is that I, I believe that we should be more rideable, walkable community. Absolutely, in downtown Phoenix, you see that. More and more people, instead of just getting in a car, riding three blocks or a half mile, they'll take the light rail, they'll, they'll ride a bike or they'll, they'll, they'll get on, they'll take a walk. So I, I like that, but at the same time, not all communities can, our individuals in our community can afford to live in the downtown area where we have all those amenities that we're talking about. So my number one concern too would be, I represent downtown, I represent South Phoenix and Maryville. And the enforcement part, because I heard that a couple of times and I heard it from the community also. When you start to enforce, enforcement means different things for different people. So in South Phoenix and Maryville, when you start to enforce traffic and pedestrian walking and all that, that's a whole different can of worms than it would be for the downtown area. You start enforcing some of these minority and low-income areas, that's a whole different, it's not about enforcing, making sure that you're crossing the street right. It's, it's, they're going to see it as a harassment. And then it's going to be a bigger burden on our police officers. So now putting on my public safety cap, that concerns me, right? And what concerns me is that I think this is a great idea, I mean, kudos to the, to the mayor, because I think it's something we should do. But I believe that, just the way that I was kind of surprised by, by this agenda, I got it Friday and was just doing all this research and reading, it's great, great information, but at the same time, I can understand some of the frustration from the community where they want to have more input, more, and more data. I think that I like to see somehow, some way where it's not just committees or so, but is there a way for us to throw it back to our staff with all these questions of what we call suicide lanes? Can we look into that? Maybe it's up to Thomas, where we start those reversible lanes, where it doesn't affect too much of the northern part of our town that really needs that. Come up with some solutions and come up with the resources that we can cover those, those solutions also. Because if we're going to talk about narrowing or widening or whatever streets, there's always resources. There's always that, where's the money going to come from, right? So I like to see our staff maybe come up with ten different issues from each council member here, answer those questions in a later meeting. I, I like it going back to the subcommittee, but I would rather have it come back to a work, a work study like this and basically have all those questions addressed to us and that the community can actually be here to say, well, that doesn't work in our community, or council member, you know, I agree with you, but. And I, I think if we can bring it back maybe in a couple of months or, or as long as it takes you all, and then if we want to call it Vision Zero, after that, after we figure out that we can do all the things that we're talking about, then I feel very, very supportive of this project. But my biggest concern is, how do we give you the concerns that we have? How can you all come back with the resources to fix those concerns? And that we're not out there promising stuff that we can't deliver? I want to make sure that whatever we say, we, we deliver on it, right? And I believe that the Heads Up program, we need to push that a little bit more. We don't really have the resources to educate people. So I know myself and, and council member Thelma Williams just created these PSAs. There are just five PSAs addressing some of those issues. But we took it upon ourselves to help you all market that. So we don't really have a marketing campaign to get the word out. We get calls and at our budget hearings, that the bus drivers are complaining that people aren't even stopping when the buses are, are putting their stop sign out. They just drive forty, fifty miles per hour right past a bus. So, so you know, those are some of the concerns that we're hearing in our budget hearings, we're hearing in our community hearings. So those are kind of things that I like to throw those, if it's five or 10 questions out to you, and maybe let's try to figure it out, right? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I need some clarification. I heard Councilwoman Pastor and Stark mention that this is something that we're going to look into, doing some research. Yet the CCR says that we want to officially commit to Vision Zero. So what is it? Are we doing research or are we here to commit to Vision Zero?
Mayor and Councilwoman Mendoza, what, what we're asking for at this point is authorization to, to, to move forward with a framework. And that framework would be brought back to the city council for further action in the future. So, but first going, our recommendation is that we first go through the subcommittee. Things like preparing a council resolution that the council could consider as the official document to commit to Vision Zero. But that's not what we're doing today, but that's, that's the type of work that would be prepared by staff if it's authorized. And so that's an example of, that's a future action. Today is, is, is giving staff the authorization to do the work to prepare that.
Okay, but that's not what the CCR says. So that's why I'm kind of concerned. My other, can I continue or?
Well, I'm just saying, because I want, because I'm back, piggybacking on your, on your statement, because the way I read, read the CCR on page seven at the bottom, it says staff to move forward, staff will begin preparing a Vision Zero framework. That what you're?
Councilwoman publicly official. Page seven as well.
Oh, I know, but I, my, where the request is, what, I guess Mario.
Why don't you go to the final slide with them?
The framework has to do with, yes, the commit to Vision Zero would be, I mean, this is why I'm confused.
So Mayor, Mayor and members of the council, I apologize for any confusion. The, so what you see on Councilwoman Mendoza, what you're talking about is the description of what's involved in becoming a Vision Zero. So there's a Vision Zero organization that outlines kind of what the, what the requirements would be to be officially recognized as a Vision Zero city. One of those things is the mayor and council would officially adopt a commitment to Vision Zero. That's, that's not what we're asking today. Another one is a commitment to the, the goal of zero traffic fatalities. So again, that's not what we're asking to be done today. Involvement of community stakeholders and eventually even the development of a commission, a Vision Zero community action plan. And so those are things that would be further down the road that are involved in becoming a Vision Zero city. But what we're asking for today is the authority to, to move forward in beginning to take those steps, which would be brought back to the subcommittee and at the council for further action in the future.
I don't feel comfortable locking myself into a Vision Zero plan. One of the frameworks of the, of the Vision Zero is data, which is very important. However, in the Thirty-Ninth Avenue issue that Councilwoman Nowakowski had, data said that this intersection didn't warm for a signal. However, we had three fatalities there. And sometimes I feel that, you know, sometimes we have to use common sense. And so I'm a little hesitant on just a data portion and not use, you know, just, I, I don't want to lock myself on that Vision Zero with the data and, I just can't.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Pastor? Yes, Councilman.
What I don't understand is why not just pick three or four hotspots? Do what Councilman Nowakowski said, go to each council member and ask us what we'd like to see done in our districts or even in the city. Mine's easy. Fix the potholes, make our streets less dangerous, repave all the streets of my district. That's what I'd like to see done. I don't want to see any lowering of speed limits, I don't want to see any narrowing of the streets. I want traffic to go through, the quality of life to go up. That's what I'd like to see done. I don't think it'd be fair to cram this down the throats of people like myself who don't want to see this in our districts. So I think every council member here could literally work with staff. Kenny's been amazing to work with, like incredible. Work with him to find out what your needs are in your own district. I think we know. Then hold those community meetings, do what you need to do, rather than creating an overwhelming plan that doesn't fit each of our own areas. So from my end of it, I'd just like to have us at least get more data, get more information. And the way to do that is to meet with staff and come up with some ideas. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Waring?
Thank you. But in addition to that, I want the fair distribution of resources. So one of my many pet peeves with light rail was its complete ineffectiveness and lack of ability to move very many people during the day. But also the fact that, that, you know, the district I represent got zero dollars for that. So nine billion of the thirty-one billion dollar plan, I think that's rough numbers, but I think that's about right, were going to light rail, none of which was going into District Two. But we have the most streets in the whole city. And there was only one billion for street repair, which Councilman DeCiccio talked about earlier, the state of the streets. I don't know how much that contributes to driving, but it certainly can't help, that's for sure. My fear when I look at this plan and the heat maps and so forth, is all the money's going to be concentrated downtown. So money's going to be raised through taxes to pay for all this from the residents of District Two, which comprises at least two hundred thousand people, if not more, I'm sure with population growth, there's probably more now. But the money's going to be redirected, we might get maybe one stoplight, maybe a couple hawks, but most of the money's going to be spent downtown. Please remember downtown, define downtown. Sixteen thousand people live downtown. Sixteen thousand is one percent of the city's population. You know how many people live and work downtown? I've said this at these meetings before. I think our economic development people have counted them. This is a real number, it's not a joke. Five hundred and fifty. So do you think I get irritated as a taxpayer in District Two when I see bike lanes and light rail and everything downtown? Sun Stadium, that was mentioned, where nobody lives? People say, well, the population's booming. Yeah, it's going to have to boom a lot to catch up to the two hundred thousand who live in my area, the area I represent. So at some point, yes, I'd rather have the streets repaved, I'd rather have stoplights for the residents who are asking, given our population growth, it's not an unreasonable ask. But my fear is District Two will get a pittance and the money's going to go elsewhere. The problem won't be addressed for the reasons I highlighted earlier. What am I supposed to tell residents up there? They pay their taxes and the money gets redirected completely away from them. So their streets by definition get less safe, less police presence, less this, less that. I, I don't know how that makes sense. I know it's not fair. I'm making my sort of best argument, but I mean, at some point, we have to accept, ask pedestrians to modify their behavior, that will by definition reduce the tragedies. Fewer intoxicated people walking across enormous streets in the dark, not in crosswalks, will reduce fatalities. I, I don't know at some point, what kind of public signs and statements, I mean, I think at one point, people were sort of indicating this is somehow the police's fault. What are they supposed to do in that scenario? Realistically, what are they supposed to do? So at some point, could we use, the words common sense were used, that's excellent. Could we use some common sense in this and try to make that work out? I, I fear for sure, that's why I'm voting against it, I guess one of the reasons, if you go the Vision Zero route, you're going to spend two years studying, come up with solutions that aren't going to solve the problem, they're going to spend a dump truck full of money. As a representative of two hundred thousand people, I'm afraid the money's going to get redirected not only towards the wrong things... not only towards the wrong things, but away from people who rightly want their share. So, it's not just about our areas being different and what's being done in those areas, but also the equal distribution of resources. I've said this stuff before. You look at where our parks are. It's absurd. It's absurd, the distribution of resources south of, say, Northern. Chair of the Parks Committee, I asked for that. So, that's taking us far afield, but it's not just roads where this is the case. But at some point, basic fairness and common sense should be used. This isn't a critique of staff. You're doing what I'm sure you're probably asked to do, but at some point, you know, people will notice. And please spend the money doing things that might actually work. Thank you.
Councilwoman Pastore.
So, I think we're all kind of on the same, not necessarily the same page, but we all have the same needs in each district. And so, I'm going to move a motion. And what the motion's going to say is I move that the city staff review the components of the Vision Zero program and assess available data and analyze specific variables for a framework, this is very key, that will address the specific characteristics of Phoenix roadway networks in each district and all its users. Second. So, I just want you to look at the components and then build a framework around all the stuff that we're doing. And I'm glad Councilwoman Waring's talking about equity. It's good to hear that.
Shall we do, I think we can just do a voice vote on this one? All right. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
All right. Passes. With that, we want to turn to Councilwoman Mendoza, who has an announcement.
Mayor could ask for a roll call on that.
All right. Roll call.
Councilman DeCiccio?
No.
Councilwoman Guevara?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mendoza?
Do you want me to read it again? I changed all my stuff, so I'll read it. I wrote it. It's to use the components. What's part of all of this?
Data-driven.
Yeah. So, I move the city staff review the components of Vision Zero program, assess the available data, analyze specific variables for a framework that will address the specific characteristics of the city roadway network in each district and all its users.
I don't feel comfortable voting for this at this time. So, it's, I'm sorry.
Councilman Nowakowski?
This is hard. I mean, I like to look at the research behind some of the issues I've talked about and making sure that there's the resources to make things happen. I just don't want to sit up here and say, we're going to adopt something that we're going to call Vision Zero and we already have something called Heads Up that's similar, but then all the things that I needed in Heads Up was the extra infrastructure stuff that we didn't have the resources to fulfill. So, I'm concerned that voting yes on this, we're going to all leave feeling good and happy, but then at the same time, what results are we going to get out of it? Are we, and what extra results besides what we have going on right now? So, I want to make sure that if we're going to sit up here, that this motion has some type of resources or some type of way of completing what we're voting on. And so, it's not just a bunch of words, but it's some type of actions behind it, behind those words. So, I'd like to see what's it going to cost to actually implement the needs within my own district and talk about not just the easy fixes, but the hard infrastructure fixes that we really need. So, saying that, I really, I'm really confused about this one thing.
Add clarity to that. So, it's a framework. It's using the components of Vision Zero. In that framework, can you add the cost to everything that, once the framework is built?
So, the motion does what Councilman Nowakowski's looking for?
Does do that. That's the intent.
I'm still, the name Vision Zero is not the problem for me. The problem that I have is, is that the lack of resources, lack of information. I didn't get a staff briefing on this, so it seems like it's going really quick. If I would have sat down and I would have been able to express my feelings like I'm doing right here in the open public with our staff, I don't think it's right to actually sit here and kind of, not scold you all, but tell you, these are the things I need done before I can even vote on this. That's why I don't feel comfortable voting yes right now, because there's not a... And I believe in the vision that the mayor has, so that's why it's so hard, because I believe that there is something that we need to do. But I want to make sure that when I vote on something, that there's resources attached to it and it's not just words, but there's some action behind it. So, it's a no.
Councilwoman Pastore? Councilwoman Stark? Council, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Waring? Mayor Gallego?
Yes.
That's four yes and four no.
It fails.
That's correct.
Councilwoman Mendoza had an announcement and then we are adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier, I did not have the, all the information, but District Eight lost a community leader, Mr. Perry Elam, and he served on many committees, the South Mountain Village, the TOD Steering Committee, the South Central Extension. His memorial services will be a South Mountain Visionary Baptist Church located on 2006 East Broadway Road on Saturday, April 27th at 2:30 PM. And I'll have this information posted on my social media as well. Thank you so much.